Good morning. Welcome to the first monthly meeting of May of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can remain standing, we'd like to observe a moment of silence in memory of one of our former chiefs of police, Raymond Grant, who passed away last week. Chief Grant was a resident of Old Greenwich. He served as chief from the mid-'70s through the early '80s. He was the recipient of the Clark Award in 1981, which is named after Dr. John Clark, awarded to police officers who have performed extraordinary service. He was someone who was instrumental in modernizing the communications of the department, placing two sergeants on shifts. He was a very active member of the community upon retiring. He worked for Pittney Bowes. But we will certainly miss his presence in our community, in his support actively for the department and the men and women who serve it. So at this time, if we can observe a moment of silence in his memory and express our sincere condolences to his wife Anne Marie and his children, notably Linda Marini, who is an employee of the town as the assistant to the director of the Nathaniel Witherell Skilled Nursing Facility. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you come in. Today, we have an item under New Business that we will take public comment on. It's known as the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Grant Program. It is a program that provides not-for-profits the ability to garner funding through corporate tax credits. So we certainly want to acknowledge that that will be taken up at that time. Minutes. And Ms. Hines will be with us. She is our recording secretary. She had an appointment that ran over, but certainly there are a couple corrections to the minutes. I noticed a couple of typos on page three. Page three, item M, there is a capitalization, capital T versus lower t. And then also to the federal, I think federal should be capitalized, the F for federal. And page four, there's a reference to the section of the charter. It's actually section 66, not 61. And I believe that carries forward down in the one, two, third paragraph. Again, it should be 66. Are there any other corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Is there a second? Okay, without objection. Why don't you take a moment to welcome a new member of the Selectmen's Office staff, and that is Blaze Levitan. Welcome, Blaze. Blaze is assuming the position of Senior Management Analyst. That was vacated by Melissa Jones, who left us to become the Assistant Town Administrator in Simsbury. Blaze, like Melissa, is a graduate of the University of Connecticut's School of Public Policy, holds a master's degree in public administration. Prior to his coming to Greenwich, he worked for the University of Connecticut and was in the position of Emergency Management Specialist overseeing all of their emergency response plans and coordination. So we're thrilled to have you onboard. We've had tremendous success with those who come to us from the University of Connecticut, my alma mater, I gotta give a plug. And we hope that your tenure is as enjoyable and as successful as Melissa's was. So, welcome.
Welcome.
And I also want to point out, because I think this is a tremendous attribute, you are a certified firefighter, too, which means that you are fully entry-tag eligible to respond to fires. And I know Mr. Raymer, my friend here, is a big advocate of my initiatives for the fire services, and we'll enjoy knowing that as well. So we could perhaps have you respond to Amherst Rowan Volunteer Fire Company during the day. And we pick up a firefighter, right? How's that? So it's a bonus. It's a bonus. I told the chief that, too. I said, "Got another volunteer." So, welcome. I do hope your tenure is as enjoyable as Melissa found it. Okay, updates. There is a lot happening. And let me just start with the big happenings this week was the approval of the town budget for the fiscal year 2017-18. It was adopted in the wee hours of the morning at Central Middle School after much discussion. And certainly, we were pleased with the work that the BET did, and I want to give my compliments to all the members of the BET for their commitment and perseverance in attending all of the committee meetings, all of the district meetings, responding to emails. I do think that this year, we saw a much more improved communication link between the town administration, the schools, the BET, and then ultimately RTM. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for your work as volunteers. I think we have a very good budget. And as I commented, the budget process is a collaboration involving all town departments as well as the town's elected bodies. The budget process is much like a puzzle. There are dozens of moving parts. There are interlocking pieces. And there are pieces that sometimes may not fit the mold of what people expect or desire. There were goals that were set and accomplished during this year's budget process, which meant that needs of the town and its residents were met with minimal financial impact on taxpayers. This could not have been accomplished without the fiscal discipline exercised by town departments and the Board of Ed, and it is a practice that has served us well as we continue to deal with the cascading fallout from the state's financial crisis. So again, hats off to the RTM for approving the budget pretty much unscathed. And for the BET, we now have, I believe, the lowest rate of increase in the mil rate. As I heard on the radio, this century, and I realized, this century's not that old. But this century, but--
Forty years.
In forty years.
Forty years.
Forty years. So again, I don't think we're patting ourselves on the back, but we're acknowledging that a lot of work went into achieving that. It wasn't just a one-shot with health care, although that health care has been mentioned. Health care contributed greatly, but there were real efforts applied by town departments and the Board of Ed to address systematic costs, and I think that should be acknowledged. And again, to the folks behind it, the town department heads, the superintendent of schools, for whom I think did a superb job on Monday night in his remarks. I sat there in great admiration for his ability to articulate his message without a note, and very effective. And Ms. Erickson, thank you for your leadership, and you brought the superintendent, the interim, to us. So we all are proud of him. We're gonna miss Dr. Corder.
Great having that.
Yeah. Yes, excellent choice. Wanted to quickly, after our last meeting, we rushed off to attend the annual Greenwich Lions Club Annual John Clark Memorial Award. At that presentation, several members of the Greenwich Police Department's Narcotics Section, Sergeant Eric Skorka, Detective Frederick Kazada, and Detective John Rondini were recognized for their extraordinary work in apprehending several individuals who were purveyors of not only possession but distribution of narcotics. And many of those, we know, have an insidious effect on our young people, on all people, but many young people with the whole opioid epidemic. So kudos to them, and we all were there to tip our hat to them. The following day, we had 50 people in attendance in this room for the 2017 YWCA Stand Against Racism Program. This is a program that's sponsored each year by the YWCA of Greenwich. We want to congratulate several of the high school students who won the Wise Racial Justice Scholarship Awards. Those individuals are Dana Wadsworth Hutton of Greenwich Academy, and Samuel Ribe and Tiffany Evangelista of Greenwich High School. On April 29th, I had the pleasure of attending the Greater Metro New York American Red Cross Chapter's annual fundraising event at the Net Jets Hangar. It's an honor to attend the event, which raises much-needed funds to continue the disaster relief efforts that the Red Cross is well-known for. The honorees were actor and author, veteran J.R. Martinez, a retired U.S. Army soldier who suffered severe burns over more than a third of his body when his Humvee hit a roadside bomb in Iraq. Amazing story, the courage that he exhibited, and then his subsequent blossoming talent was on full display to see, as he's a wonderful musician, soloist, singer, I mean, tremendous. Also honored were the heroes of the French train attack, which occurred back in August of 2015. The trio of childhood friends who were vacationing in Europe quickly subdued a gunman aboard a Paris-bound train, saving many lives. They are Anthony Sadler, Spencer Stone, and Alex Scarlatos. And I had a chance to just talk with them and stand in awe, looking at them, that these young men sprung to action. When you listen to their story personally, you realize they thought nothing of it. It was some impulsive nature. They said, "We just had to do something." And so, kudos to them. They enjoyed coming to Greenwich. I welcome them to come back. I think they would be wonderful speakers for any program that involves our young people, particularly as their qualities are ones we hope is exhibited by all. On May 1st, I went to the Boys and Girls Club here in Greenwich, where they've implemented a number of energy-efficient improvements. Eversource Energy had staff on hand who attended and estimated that the club would be able to save about $41,000 a year in expenses with the upgrades to the high-efficiency lighting on the first-floor pool, gym, fieldhouse, and garage. These upgrades are just a number of those changes that are being made at facilities throughout the town. On May 2nd, I was honored to be a participant with the schools and the distinguished teachers' ceremony held at Greenwich High School's Performing Arts Center. The dedicated teachers honored this year were Koskow School 5th-grade teacher Stephen Babiac, North School kindergarten teacher Victoria Morrison Capiale, Greenwich High School history/psychology teacher Michael Gala Tioto, Greenwich High School special education teacher Aaron Randall, and Eastern Middle School language arts teacher Bridgette Suwansri. Did I get it right? Suwansri. I asked her that night. I said, "How do you pronounce?" And North Manas School special education teacher Diane Taylor. I must say, I believe that American historian Henry Brooks Adams was absolutely correct. When in his book, The Education of Henry Adams, was published back in 1907, he stated, quote, "A teacher affects eternity. He can never tell where his influence stops. We can only hope that the influence of all Greenwich teachers will not cease and will affect their students in a most positive manner for many years to come." And that clearly was the case in hearing the testimonies of those who nominated these distinguished teachers. So, congratulations. On May 3rd, the Southwest Fairfield County Region Drought Task Force held a meeting via conference call. With the continued spring rains, our reservoir levels have rebounded from the drought conditions of last summer and fall. We also know that in order to prevent the recurrence of dangers to low reservoir levels, we are going to continue to practice conservation in water use. Both Aquarian and the Connecticut Department of Health continue to urge residents to conserve water consumption by at least 10% in addition to the restriction on lawn irrigation to two days per week. On a brighter note, the mobile signs that you saw flashing, water conservation warnings have finally been removed by Aquarian. So we did get a lot of comments about those signs from residents, some who were away for the season and came back and saw them, and they found them frankly offensive. When I say several people, like two or three, but the fact that they took the time to express that to us, and of course, expressed to them the reason for it. But they were removed, and one of the things that's taking place now, and Denise Savageo, our conservation director, is in continued discussions through these task forces about educating people as to the best irrigation practices. And we had a meeting last week with the chairman of the Conservation Commission and some of the irrigation companies, who they themselves have ideas for restrictions. And their view was simply that you don't perhaps even need to water as early as is allowed, in April, May, perhaps even June, and that the two-day should really be expanded to three days when you get into July and August because of the intensity of heat. So it's a collaboration. Like most things, we're going to listen to experts in the field. We're gonna also listen to those providers, and we're going to exercise our own judgment. But our citizens truly are the backbone, because they've listened to the messages and complied. I did attend an event in New York that I want to mention, because it recognized one of our local residents who's been generous with her time and treasure, and it was an event sponsored by the St. George Society of New York that honored Natalie Prey for her work to benefit those in need throughout the New York area. And it's a very longstanding organization, I believe dating back to 1770. Mrs. Prey was the first and only female president of that organization, which was touted, given that the length and tenure of it. So we were pleased to applaud her for her efforts. The following day, we all were here for the National Day of Prayer Ceremony, which brought together dozens of residents and representatives of many of the churches and interfaith organizations. We also have the pleasure to be included in several of the spring events, notably the commissionings of the various boat and yacht clubs. And all three of us were in attendance at the Indian Harbor Yacht Club Commissioning last Saturday evening, although we were joined by Senator Blumenthal and Congressman Himes. And in addition, we were at the Old Greenwich Boat and Yacht Club Commissioning earlier that day. On Saturday evening, I attended the 65th anniversary celebration of ABOLIS, which assists families with individuals with special needs. We're really blessed to have such a dedicated organization here in town, and it has helped countless clients and their families throughout the 65 years. Had an opportunity to visit with one of our friends and former Board of Education members, Adriana Ospina, who was an instrumental part of organizing the festivities that evening, and truly inspiring what they're able to accomplish. Put in a plug for them. If you desire, please visit their gift shop down on Glenville Street. They have a nice little shop that sells various goods, candles, soaps, plants. They have services they provide in terms of wood cutting and yard cleanup. Clearly, an empowering organization, and one that we should be pleased is here in our town of Greenwich. On Sunday, attended the Historical Society's annual Greenwich Landmark Recognition Event with the presentation of the Preservation Action Awards. The four landmarks recognized this year were the Conyers Manor Cold Storage Barn, built in 1909, the Parat Memorial Library, built in 1930, Sunridge Farm on Riversville Road, where two buildings were recognized, one built in 1923 and the other 1929. In addition, the Edwin Paul House, which was referred to as sort of the baby of the group, because it was built in 1959. It's a contemporary home. I believe it's like 25 feet in width, but the length was far more extraordinary, and is built in the topography of the property. It was a very, very informative program. When you look at the history of these, some of them were built during the Great Depression, either at the beginning of or during, which in itself is fairly remarkable. The Greenwich Land Trust was also honored for its restoration and adaptive reuse of the Louise Mueller Preserve, and the Greenwich Point Conservancy for the completion of the restoration of the gateway path in Old Barn. So thank you to the Historical Society for their program in recognizing these treasured properties and the people behind them, who make a commitment to not only preserve them but financially do so with great time and care. On a couple of other notes, a little bit more weighty. We are continuing our monitoring and active scrutiny of Eversource Energy's proposals to build a new substation here in Greenwich into run lines from Koskow down to central Greenwich. We were fortunate to once again have engaged the support of our senior senator and Greenwich resident, Richard Blumenthal. He, through his staff, have sent a letter to Kenneth Bowes, and I'm gonna read it, because it's such an important issue. It's not that lengthy, but it gives the essence of the issue. And he writes, "Dear Mr. Bowes, I'm writing to strongly urge Eversource to consider filing a new Greenwich substation petition with the Connecticut Siting Council that encompasses the town of Greenwich's proposed route for the transmission line. This proposal would be consistent with the directive of the Connecticut Siting Council to work collaboratively with the town on a mutually agreeable solution. As you know, the town of Greenwich has raised numerous legitimate concerns regarding the proposed route by Eversource along the railroad right-of-way, including the danger to the force main to their sewer treatment facility, potential environmental issues with mounting very tall towers over the critical sewer treatment line, limitations on the ability to respond to railroad accidents, and aesthetics. The town's proposed route would avoid all these concerns. I understand that Eversource has raised issues of the higher cost for the town's proposal, and that the Connecticut Siting Council decision referenced its proposed, quote, 'hybrid alternative,' end quote, which includes using the railroad right-of-way. However, the Connecticut Siting Council has also acknowledged that the hybrid alternative was not fully vetted, which signals that it wasn't convinced it was the most appropriate alternative. Therefore, I would urge Eversource to work with the town to ensure the project is completed in the most cost-effective manner. To that end, Eversource should compare how the proposals currently impact all aspects of the project, including cost, environmental impact, public safety, threats to reliability by outside factors, potential for cost overruns, operation and maintenance of the rail line, and find the solution that is acceptable to the town and meets those concerns. I appreciate Eversource working with the town in a cooperative manner, but that effort would be wasted if there isn't a collaborative solution on which both parties agree." Thank you. Richard Blumenthal. We're thankful to our senator for that, and we'll continue to work with him. We are also going to engage the support of Attorney General Jepson. I do want to also say that on our professional staff here, we have two extremely capable department heads in Katie DeLuca and Amy Seabert, and both of them have been working closely with me in our position. Amy Seabert, yesterday, sent a letter to Mr. Bowes outlining the concerns specifically pertaining to the force main. We all know that the town is under a consent decree as a result of prior failures in that line, or in our lines, sewer lines, in that we're needing to adhere to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the United States Department of Justice's imposed consent decree. So Commissioner Seabert has sent, I believe it's a five-page letter with accompanying backup material, as well as the actual decree, to Mr. Bowes, so that he is abundantly clear that this is not just a question of being NIMBY. This is truly about ensuring the environmental integrity of our town's wastewater treatment system. In conversations I held with Mr. Bowes, he's acknowledged that, of course, they would want to work with us, and that they would, if we provided them the documentation, consider the alternative. I can respect his comments. I can't say that I'm confident they're adhering to it, because they have filed their application with the Siting Council with the hybrid plan in it, as well as the alternative. So next Thursday, I believe, is the date for cutoff for providing comments on this resubmission. The following Thursday, May 25th, there'll be a hearing. Now, I understand it's not a public hearing up there. It's just they're having a meeting. I intend to go to that meeting with several of our staff, which is why on our agenda we're going, we're rescheduling the meeting. But in conclusion, we did meet, Katie and I, with residents of the Circle Drive, Morningside Drive, Indian Field, Bruce Park, Millbrook, anyone within those environs who had an interest on Tuesday evening, May 2nd. And we were supported most effectively and graciously by a gentleman named Mitch Mailman. Mr. Mailman is an industry professional in the development of power utility facilities, and he's been working with us pro bono from inception to help investigate, assess, determine the best course of action. He informed all of those residents as to the issues, and again, highlights the solution that we have offered is one that would run the lines underground through what is referred to as disturbed areas, through Bruce Park. Now, if you recall, we argued very vociferously, we did not want to go through Bruce Park last time. But the distinction is very clear. Last time, they were talking about horizontal directional drilling through ball fields, through undisturbed terrain, underneath ponds, and creating all the slurry and mess that goes with it, and installing petroleum-filled lines through those drilled holes. Therefore, we were vehemently opposed. This proposal, it's a different cabling system. It doesn't have petroleum in it, and it's through the roadway, and it's very much similar to what we would see with normal utility work. It would be open trench, and you'd fill it, move on. So that can be done, according to Mr. Mailman, and that would therefore avoid putting these 125 to 195-foot towers through the landscape and jeopardize our force main. So stay tuned. It's probably right now, if we look at all of the issues we're facing, one of our top priorities in its immediacy to be focused is certainly there. I know that, I believe that concludes. Anything else in terms of meetings? Oh, we do want to mention that's sort of prospective, it's sort of done a retrospective. Tuesday at 4:00 in this room, I would encourage you, listening, certainly encourage my fellow selectmen to attend, the First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee is presenting its eighth annual diversity writing contest awards to several of our high school students. We've been very fortunate that we've had a very dedicated group of volunteers who serve on that committee and have helped sponsor this program. I do want to express specific gratitude to Alma Rutgers, who has been a focal point in seeing that this program not only continues but grows. So if you all can come, it's a relatively short program, lasts about 60, maybe 90 minutes tops, but you not only will hear who the recipients are, you will hear their works, excerpts of their works, and those works will be published in the local papers for all to read. I believe the subject this year was on-- I believe the subject this year was on civility in discourse, in public discourse, a great topic. And in fact, I was in, I influenced that topic. We began that discussion back, I want to say it was in the fall, so it, there are some of the, some of the titles of the essays have connection to the political environment, but some don't. And so, it's just interesting, I have not read them, so I'm just saying, it's curious to see the results. So, please come next Tuesday, I believe, 4:00. And then, finally, last, I'd like to have, Selectman Marzullo was good enough to stand in for me on Tuesday and attend a funeral for a recognition that we do annually with Stephanie Palmino, and so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for asking me to attend. I want to thank Stephanie Palmino for organizing the event. It was an event to recognize and honor nurses throughout the country for their hard work and dedicated work. And I said this at the event, that there are not many professions that personally touch the lives of so many. And if you think about it, like nurses are employed in so many areas, including, to name a few, I mean, education and administration, politics, patient care, home care, and they, in terms of patient care, if you just think about it too, you know, they're there to deliver babies and some are there at the end of one's lives. So, thank you to them, and thank you for all the hard work and dedicating compassionate work that nurses do throughout the whole country. So, thank you. It was nice. And thank, once again, to Stephanie Palmino.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Did you have anything that you?
Okay.
Okay, that concludes updates. So, under old business, at our last meeting, if we recall, we had initially had on our agenda the proposed charter change that was specific to Section 38 of the Charter, which affected the composition, election methods of the Board of Education. After considerable discussion, we voted two to one to take no action on that proposal. The reason for doing so was that subsequently, people had raised the issue that, when you look at Section 66 of the Charter, Section 66 currently requires any changes that impacts the existence, mode of selection, composition, rights, powers, privileges, or duties of the RTM, the Selectmen, the Board of Estuemen, taxation shall become effective only after approved at a referendum held not later than one year after the completion of all the actions as required by Section 67. So, the question was, well, why not have the Board of Education changes be required to go to referendum, thereby giving the electorate the same involvement? We were advised at that meeting, and the town attorney is here, so he can affirm it for those who would prefer to hear from him, but essentially, we follow the home rule process. Home rule means that we are established through special acts that are unique to the town. And so, when we go about amending our charter, we abide by that process. And that process involves establishment of a committee, the committee studying the question, the committee issuing a report, presenting it to the Board of Selectmen, the Selectmen determining whether it merits to move to the RTM, and then the RTM taking action. In this case now, so we're not talking really about the composition, we're talking about, should any changes to the Board of Ed really have to go to referendum before taking effect? Whereas, if we chose to pass along the change that was being discussed to the RTM and the RTM adopted it, that would be the final opinion on it. So, it really broadens the discussion to the community, but that in itself requires a referendum. So, if you're following me, 38 is sort of been put aside while we really are now addressing a whole new question and concept. It's really about the process. And as you can imagine, these are time-consuming because you think about the method of establish a committee, committee meets, the committee studies, the committee listens, the committee reports, then it comes back. So, now, we're talking about a question that if, if it were to advance, conceivably could be before the electorate in this election, but perhaps not, then we're talking about 2018, and then if it's adopted in 2018, it's, what's adopted is that any changes would go to referendum. So, if you follow me, we're really on a whole different track with this subject, and it really, to me, is more about our democratic processes. So, as you know, we had a committee that looked at the prior question. There were five people on that committee. Unfortunately, one passed at the conclusion of its work, so we were down to four. If we were to move this question to a committee, I've spoken to Mr. Finger, Mr. Von Braun, Mr. Paldunis, and then Mr. Rickert. All of them said they would be willing to serve to look at this question, but they would be constituted as a new subject committee. 38's over here, 66's over here. So, if we use the numbers, it's easy to discern. 66 is about, really, the process. 38 is really about actual change to the composition. We also would like to, you know, we look at the committee, what's the right number? We went with five because of what you had recommended early on, I mean, a broader base. I did receive a concern from a member of the RTM, also happens to be a member of the DTC, about balancing the committee. Right now, I believe the committee with the four has two Rs, one U, and one D. If you look at our electorate, our electorate pretty much shakes out right now. Us represent, and when I say us, I say unaffiliated, 36.4% of the electorate, Rs, 35.7, and Ds, 26.2. But if you sort of figure it out, it's, if you were to take five people, you'd have two U, two R, one D. If, you know, you can't sort of take a part of a person, although I told Mr. Finger he counts for at least 1.5. He got a kick out of that. So, we need a, we need a, we need a U or a, we need a U or a D. Frankly, to me, it doesn't matter, but if you were to follow a purist method of like how our broader electorate is, you'd find a U. So, I did reach out to Cindy Anderson, who was the former head of the League of Women Voters, whom I have great admiration for. Cindy was flattered to be asked, although she said she, right now, is deeply engaged in implementing their, the League of Women Voters' own RTM reform package, and she felt that it would be too burdensome and perhaps cloud her efforts, because if you think about it, what the committee is looking at is really saying to the RTM, we may want you to forward or have forwarded your actions to the electorate. So, in a way, it affects the RTM in itself. So, I think she felt that that might present issues, but was flattered to be asked and considered. So, the point is, we would need to, if we want to have five, find someone, she offered to assist us in that regard with someone on the league who has an interest in governance. So, Wayne, if you would, I know Mr. Marzullo wants to comment on it, but if you, if you want to sort of cover that, that question on what 66 is about and what we would have to do to follow what you basically described at the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just before we get there, I would like to introduce a motion before we even get to this point, and then, after that motion, predicting how that will go, another motion in terms of 38 itself, but the, so, out of, before we get here.
Well, you certainly can make your motion.
But my motion is in terms of, once again, it, you know, for many reasons, as you know, I have outlined for almost a year now, I am against such change, such, so I will once again ask this board per motion to table such discussion about this issue altogether. So, my motion is as stated and outlined formally at our last meeting. So, that's on the record. I want to be, I'm trying to go on the record here, once again.
Sure. So, the motion, just so it's clear, so your motion is to table what's on the agenda, which essentially is to establish a committee to review a proposal to add the Board of Education to Section 66 of the town charter.
Actually, my motion's going to be even a little less specific than that. My motion is to table any discussion regarding charter change and process, period. So, it's not just related to that issue, it's related to this topic in general, period of the process.
So, that's your motion. Is there a second to that? There is no second.
Now, predicting that in regards to, for Wayne, there is Wayne Opines, in terms of, because it's not on the agenda for discussion purposes and for possible, an amendment or possible voting purposes, 38, 38, correct? 38? That's the number?
38.
Yeah, 38 is not on the agenda, so in order for us to discuss and possibly vote on 38, that would have to be brought up for, how do we get it back on the agenda, then? How do we get it for?
Well, there's a couple of ways. Number one, as you know, you can petition the, not for today, but you have the right to petition the First Selectmen to get an item on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's a separate section of the Charter, which allows you to do that as a member of the Selectmen.
But I assume the reason why I didn't last night was only because I assumed, and I could be wrong, that under, you know, old business, we could bring that up already, 38, because we've been talking about it now for six months, but.
In terms of transparency and openness to the public.
Sure.
I think the better approach, if you wish to do that, Drew, would be to make a motion to add something to the agenda. This is a regular meeting, I believe, of the Board of Selectmen, so you have the right to add something to the agenda, should you wish.
And that, for discussion purpose, because we've already talked a little bit about 38, and actually, in the opening, I mean, in your remarks, you mentioned 38, so can we, so for formal purposes, I would like to bring that up?
I think for clarity's sake, the cleanest and simplest way to do it would be to make a motion to add something to the agenda.
Okay. So, my motion would be under old business to add discussion?
Add that item for discussion and possible vote theoretically.
Yeah, possible vote, if I can receive a second on that, for discussion, because we already, we already talked about 38 a bit, you mentioned 38 a bit, so.
I didn't mention the merits of 38. I mentioned that 38 was before, so the motion is now to bring up discussion on.
And it's important.
The board's charter amendment, Section 38.
It is, and it's important to me only because 38 affects what we're going to do next, in my opinion, in terms of how I'm going to vote and how I'm going to proceed with the other subsequent votes, so.
So, at our last meeting, so the motion is made, does it have a second? So, there's no, there's no second. I'm just, the minutes show that the last meeting, we voted two to one to take no action on 38, so it's, so I don't think there's anything, for me, I'm speaking, I don't think there's anything's changed since the last meeting on 38.
So, are you saying I wouldn't be able to? Because my, my, my request ultimately is going to be that we, and once again, it's, I have to hear the discussion about this committee before I get to 38. However, with that said, one of the possible motions that I'm going to make under 38 will be to not form this committee and to bring 38 directly to the RTM for an up or down vote on the policy presented originally. So, how is that, how do I get that on, then?
I would say, again, that the cleanest and simplest way to do it, since that issue is not on the agenda, you have the right to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add it to the agenda for discussion and/or a vote.
So, okay, so let me be clear for the record.
That would require a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so let me be clear for the record, then, because I will, you know, ask for a vote on 38 specifically. I would like to bring up 38 under old business and subsequently vote on the original plan to bring this possible change to the RTM for an up or down vote.
I think you have the right to make that request. I think in terms of the big picture, I think in terms of why we have agendas and why we have motions to add to agendas.
Sure.
If I'm John Q. Public out there, and I'm interested in what's going to happen to Section 38, if anything, that technically is not on your agenda today. I would come here or not come here based upon what I expected to be discussed and heard.
Sure.
You have the absolute right to make a motion to add to it, and if it is the will of your body, you could do.
True, but let me, once again, I want, I want to be clear, the reason, once again, to go under the reasons, whatever, about a politicized board and policy, but I am, I'm at this, I'm at this point, you know, confident that the RTM, once again, you know, will vote this down, and I think it should be sent to the RTM at this point. So, for me to get it to the RTM, that's going to require, number one, a vote on visiting, I mean, what, 38, again?
If you, if you want to get 38 to the RTM, it would require a couple of things. Number one, it would require that it be on the agenda. It will require a positive vote from your board, and then it would require that it be referred to the town clerk who then refers it to the RTM.
Okay, that's clear. Okay, so that, okay, so then.
How many days? You said referred to the town clerk.
Referred to the town clerk after.
The Charter provides that if, in fact, you adopt such a proposal, it is referred to the town clerk, who then refers it to the RTM for their next meeting.
All right, so, okay, so my, it's clear. Okay, so for the, I guess, this is what then, Mr. Chairman, voting on?
Right. I thought we already took the motion, but do it again if you'd like.
Okay, so I hereby moving that the, I guess, you can have this, I am hereby moving that the charter change to Section 38, that was tabled at our last meeting on April 27, be sent to the RTM by our vote today, but also, I have to even bring 38 up for discussion anyway. So, I guess, you know, it's two parts, I guess, if you will.
Right, I understood you to say, so the first action is a motion to take up 38 because it's not on the agenda. Right, so.
I just wanted to, here's my point, I just wanted to be clear. Obviously, if they, if they vote this down, I just want to be clear why, on the record, I'm bringing up 38. That's what I'm trying to get at, you know? About, you know, what my intentions are.
Right, but your point, though, is you have to have an agreement, a motion and approval to even discuss 38.
To even vote, to vote.
Right, I understood that clearly before, I thought we already did that, but we'll do it again. So, you made the motion to take up 38. Is there a second? There's no second.
Okay, so, and to be clear, for our next Board of Selectmen meeting, then, I then could then ask, because it is germane to business, I can then put this on the agenda for a vote, then, specifically on that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Great, yep.
Okay.
Great, we're all on the same page at last. So, the next item, and you were going to explain it, I tried my best in a non-lawyerly fashion, but I know that people have great admiration for the legal presentation. So, I'm going to indulge everybody to hear it from the town attorney, our esteemed town attorney.
The non-lawyerly presentation is probably better, and you did it well. The concept is reasonably simple. We now have Section 66, which requires a mandatory referendum under certain circumstances, and in particular, if you're going to change the existence, the mode of selection, the composition, the rights, the powers, privileges, or duties of the RTM, Board of Selectmen, or the BET. What the concept is, as I understand this, is to add to that the Board of Education. That would require a charter change. We are very fortunate to be one of the few towns in the state of Connecticut that has home rule, so we can take it through our RTM without having to follow the rather difficult and cumbersome process set up by the statutes. We can do this under our existing charter. We can have it referred to a committee, if that is the will of the body, have the committee study it, refer it back to you, and then it would be up to you to take certain actions. In our opinion, and I've discussed this with several members of the Law Department, what you would be doing would be changing the authority of the RTM, and consequently, this concept, if you chose to pursue it, would have to go to a referendum. It's not any more complex than that.
But they would have to approve it.
They would, yes, sir.
So, committees form.
Committees form, comes back to you, assuming that you approve it, goes to the RTM, the RTM takes it up, assuming the RTM approves it, it would then be required to go to a referendum.
So, essentially, I follow you, the referendum would be the question on whether any changes to the Board of Education would have to go to referendum?
That is correct.
I mean, that's simply as you put it, so it's.
Board of Education would be added to that group that would require a referendum if you're taking any of those actions, such as a composition.
So, instead of, instead of 116 people deciding a change, which is what a majority is of the RTM, it would require a majority of those who show up at electorate, but isn't there a provision that it has to be by a certain, certain percentage? Like, I want to say like 15% or?
Only at a special election.
Special?
Under, under Section 66, subsection B, approval of such home rule action at a regular election shall be by a majority of the electorate. shall be by a majority of the electors voting thereon, and at a special election, which I think is what it was referred to, shall be by a majority of the electors voting thereon, which majority shall be not less than 15% of the electors of the town, so that is, I think, what you're referring to.
Yeah.
If it's a special election, it requires a minimum number of people voting.
In your recollection, there have been few, but have most of the charter things have been through more of a general election?
In my experience, they have been for a number of reasons, some of which are practical, you're more likely to get more people voting, it is cheaper since you're already holding an election at all, you don't have to incur the expense of a special election.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say personally, I think that would be the way to go, is through a general election, because for all the reasons you articulated and given everybody's sensitivity, but ultimately, the RTM would decide if they wanted to do that.
Correct.
That initial question.
I would, I would, I mean, Wayne, two things, in a particular order, I mean, I think prior, I would ask through the chair to, prior to a formal committee, again, being voted on, I would suggest that we introduce that question first to the Board of Education itself and ask them to opine on that issue, since it is a Board of Education issue, that's number one, before the committee, and number two is, in regards to Section 66, affecting the Board of Education does not require a Board of Education vote, meaning the BET has to, you know, a charter change to the Finance Board has to originate at the Finance Board, the Board of Selectmen needs a two-thirds vote, the RTM needs X amount of number. In order for 66 to be changed, I would think you would have to add, under 67, a proposal for home room action affecting the Board of Education can only be initiated by the Board of Education, since the other three bodies of government have the same rule.
That is something you could consider, it is not required.
It's, no, it's not required, but I don't know why we wouldn't, when the RTM has a rule governing such, the Board of Estimate and Taxation does, and the Board of Selectmen, why would we then not require the same rules under 67 and not include the Board of Education when it's an education charter change?
That's a policy decision for you to make, that's not a legal decision.
Sure. So those are the two questions I have in terms of the, you know, through the chair, in terms of a, before a committee, having the Board of Education formally opine, but also discussion on 67, by adding a rule, I mean, adding a sentence, basically, that is similar to all other, to all the other three governing bodies. I mean, why wouldn't we?
Nothing precludes the Board of Education independently from taking a position on any question that's before the town that relates to any issue remotely related to education, so whether we require them to, there's nothing impeding them from offering their views, in fact, many of the members of the board use the process that is presently outlined to express their opinions on the first question, so...
And I...
So they can avail themselves, again, if they'd like to do so in a more formal fashion, there's nothing impeding them from doing so.
And I hear you, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to, before, you know, we vote on a committee, that we formally send something through this board, asking the Board of Education to opine before the committee, so that would be number one for a vote on that, and then number two, if we get to, well, independent of that, independent of whether or not it goes to committee or the Board of Education first, I think we should just have a discussion on 67 about voting on adding that part, that if this were in fact be voted on affirmatively, that we add the Board of Education to the other three governing bodies with the same language.
That would be a policy decision for you to make.
Sure, and I'm someone making that then, I guess, if we get to that.
That would be for your board to decide, there is no requirement that that occur.
No, and I recognize that.
67, which you allude to, talks in terms of affecting the BET or the Finance Department, may be initiated only by affirmative vote of seven members of the BET.
Sure.
It goes on to say, as you know, any other proposals for home rule action may be initiated only by the affirmative vote of a majority of the selectmen.
Sure, but if you, but if you look to, though, it does, any type of Board of Selectmen charter change would require the Board of Selectmen bringing that up, any rule to the RTM would require an RTM member to bring it up, I mean, so...
Require approval by the RTM, not brought up by the RTM.
Yes, but this process as is, does not require any formal input with a form of vote with the Board of Education in an education issue.
That is correct.
So before we go to a committee versus Board of Education, I think we should be amending 67 before we get to 66.
That would be for your board to decide. That's a policy decision.
But again, to do that, you would recommend there be a committee so that we follow the home rule process, right?
I would also agree with that.
It comes back to what you said at the inception, is that we're a home rule community, and in a home rule community, you establish a charter committee to look at a question and present the question.
That is a good practice, it is one that we have constantly followed.
That's what, I think that's what I'm getting at, though.
Sort of like comes full circle, even to address this, I would think you still need a committee.
If, in fact, you wish to make that change in Section 67, I would recommend that, yes, sir.
A committee.
Whether you want to make that change in 67 or not, it's a different issue.
Well, if a committee were to be, yes, so what I'm saying is, if a committee were to be voted on, that the question we're delivering to the committee is specifically about this change, including the Board of Education in that question.
Correct.
But before even we get there, I would like to, before we even get to a committee, I do believe that the board, I would like the input formally to our board about how they feel about this, period, about change.
You certainly have the right to make that request.
Sure.
They may do it all, also if they choose to.
So what order would you then suggest I, you know, do, I mean, first vote on, ask them, my colleagues, to consider sending this specific question that we're going to give to the committee, to the Board of Education first, and have them get back to us at the next, when's your next Board of Education meeting, Laura?
The voting meeting is at 1:00.
All right, so then...
That would be up to your board.
Yeah, and I would like to, you know, that would be nice to hear from them back, maybe at our next Board of Selectmen meeting.
That's up to you.
Before we get to the committee.
It's not a requirement, it's not a legal requirement, it's not required by the charter.
I'm well aware of that.
If you wish to do that, you have the right to do it.
Sure, and I do, and if we can bring that back to our next Board of Selectmen once again, with that same question, so now we're just debating, yeah, with the question to bring back to us input from the Board of Education.
Up to you.
Prior to the committee.
So is that being made in the form of a motion?
It's up to Drew.
I guess you would have, I mean, I guess you would have to, right, I mean, because...
That certainly would be one way of doing it, yes.
Sure, before, okay, and that would be my second, yeah.
So, just so we get the minutes right, so, I understand, I do understand what your point is, so, and trying to do, so you made a motion to effectuate that?
If it requires that, yeah, I mean, yes.
Is there a second to it? There's no second. And again, coming back to the committee, no matter what we do, it all comes back to you have to have a committee to ensure we follow the home rule process, that's what I keep hearing, and I know that we're very sensitive to this as it relates to protecting that, and that's been at the forefront, not just with these questions, but any questions that have come up, going back to when they looked at the budget process, and it all came through a committee that was established by the Board of Selectmen.
Historically, that is what we have done, you are correct, and we are very sensitive to maintaining and protecting the rights we have under home rule, and I think it would be appropriate, as we have done in the past, to have a committee study it and report back to your board.
Okay, there's no second, and I do understand that, I'm just curious why, because I'm thinking as a selectman, if, I think we would, we would have objections to another board not asking for our formal input, I'm just, what's the negative about for two weeks sending it to the Board of Education for them to formally opine, I don't...
Is that a question?
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just asking.
Again, I think there's ample opportunity through a committee for members of the Board of Education individually or as a group to take up the question, I don't think they need to be sort of told to or asked to, I think they're independent elected people who know that this question surfaced, so, I mean, I think there's that opportunity, then I think once the committee, as we've seen, once they've rendered a report, then they've come before us, so that's two opportunities, they themselves can actually bring up if they want, if they choose to, but I think, you know, again, we're trying to all follow what you're telling us is the process, so that we don't wind up giving any semblance that we were not following anything other than the home rule process versus the statutory process.
Which I, I understand totally, and actually respect in many ways, I just think from a cleaner process, as this continues, it would be nice to have the Board of Education formally opine on this, before our board will be voting on an issue affecting their board.
Perhaps, perhaps we can accomplish what you're suggesting simply by...
Requesting.
Formalizing the sentiments, that this is the question that's before us, in fact, to be fully clear, this question is before us because the current chairman of the Board of Education raised it, so in many respects, perhaps the comment is a letter to the chairman saying that the subject is before the board, with the first step being the establishment of a committee, would you please bring before your board the question and basically pull their support for it, or what their view is on it?
I think it would, I think it would.
That way, it's just...
Yeah, I'm okay with that, okay.
I'm happy to do that, it would take frankly a simple email, and thank you.
Frankly, I can just bring it up and have it adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for, Mr. Chairman, and then also now, before, you're going to, 67, we can have the discussion on, and that wording adding...
Well, Wayne, explain, we have 66, because that's the section that you mentioned, 67 is a different section, and again, I don't want to fall into that we're taking up something that we did not have on the agenda, we had on 66.
But 67, I think they're related very much, I mean, I, I mean...
If, in fact, Drew wishes to make a motion, correct me if I'm wrong in this interpretation, to add a proposal to the one that is before you today to include an additional consideration of 67, the amendment of 67, making that part of what's before you, I think you would have the right to do that.
But does that require a formal vote when we're...
I think it should.
Well, no, because I'm going to be, we're going to be voting on a committee, and I guess we're going to be sending a committee a specific question, and the question's going to say, 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 you know, whatever it's going to say, but in that question itself, I'm asking them to consider adding the line that happens to pertain to 67, but it really has, it affects 66 as well, I mean, they're sort of intertwined here.
If, in fact, it is your wish to have them include consideration of 67 and the proposal you're making to 67, then I think that should be part of the formal motion that's going to be presented to that group and possibly voted on here today.
So I guess I would have to do that then?
I think you should, yes, sir.
Okay, and a proposal for home, yeah, be initiated only by the affirmative vote of five members of the Board of Education, but I want to reemphasize, just like the BET has to do, just like the Board of Selectmen, and in some ways, the RTM, so we're really not, we're affording them the same language pretty much as every other town body.
What we ask them to do is set out in a fairly formal manner, if you wish to amend what we're asking them to do, I think that should be done in a formal manner, there's also the possibility, assuming this group is appointed, and assuming they have meetings...
Sure.
I would have to assume they will have some kind of public input, which would allow you to present that to them as a consideration for their discussion.
Sure, I think that, I would like that formally brought to them, because that's a big deal.
I think you have, I think you have the right to have this body consider it, so that there's no debate about it somewhere down the road.
Sure.
If you wish to do that, which is your right, I think you should do it by making a motion to have that incorporated in what they're studying.
Okay.
So, great, so the action really today is form a committee, right?
Correct, that is correct.
Section 66 was referenced, but you're saying it's okay to brought it to 67 because they're related, there's no issue with that, correct?
That is correct, the concept, which I understand, Drew, to be talking about, is the possibility of amending what is before you to include consideration of an amendment to 67. That is different from the concept of going back to Section 38, which is different and not even on your agenda, and adding that to the agenda.
You're saying they're related, and I could see from what you handed us, I mean, 66 refers to 67.
They are connected, yes, sir.
66 refers to 67, so in a sense, if you're parsing, it's there in 66, reference to 67.
And Drew seems to have a specific concept with what happened to 67.
I have no, I mean, I have no issue with it, I'm just trying to effectuate, it's like a baby step, like, we're kind of going in circles, basically, it's, we have a questions, people want a question answered, in order to answer the question, we got to give it to a committee, so let's at least get off first base and get it to a committee, then the question, who's on the committee, I open by saying, I personally, I don't want to speak for Mr. Toner, but we need a fifth person, you advise it be five, it could still be four, but I myself would like to see five, I would prefer to see someone of a different gender than we have with the other four, we had Ms. Caldwell, may she rest in peace, and, you know, we talked about the composition, people seemed to think it was weighted too heavily one way, so I'd say I'm supportive of moving the four with the fifth being a U or a D and a female, and ideally, a member of the League of Women Voters, so if there's anybody in the room who could raise their hand who fit any of those profiles, you win the prize, you become the fifth member. It's like, it's like the golden wrapper when you get Willy Wonka in the Chocolate Factory, you open it up and you got the golden ticket, does anybody here have the golden ticket? Do they meet that profile? Please.
Okay, so, and let me be clear to you, I'm going to ask my colleagues to, when giving this question to this committee, to add this proposed language, however, I'm still going to, I'm going to be voting, you know, this is where it gets a little funny, I'm still against the committee, I think this should be tabled altogether, but independent of that, if and when this, and it looks like it's going to go to this committee, that it's imperative that we have this language, so I don't want this misconstrued, because I'm voting against, I'm not voting against this for the record, I'm voting against a committee in general, because I think this should be tabled per my other vote, but we'll get to that in steps.
Okay.
So I guess the first amendment, Mr. Chairman, I guess, would be just adding to the question that a proposal for home room, you know, action affecting the Board of Education may be initiated only by an affirmative vote of five members of the Board of Education, reemphasizing again, this is no different than the other town bodies in terms of how they implement change, so that would be, if we can add that first, if that's okay.
But, right, but we're adding that to the charge of the committee, so we're not actually voting on the specific section ourselves, we're voting on simply, again, just to repeat, we're establishment of a committee, what you're saying is you want the committee to review that section along with Section 66, that's really what, because that's all we have on our agenda, is to establish a committee.
True, but, well, yes, it's, well, it's sending them the question to review 66, and I'm asking 67, but I also want them to review 67 about the proposal, about adding the Board of Education into it, that I would like to send to this committee specifically that, because it's not just reviewing 67, they're going to be reviewing it, but I want to make sure that from this board's point of view, from my point of view, that they're reviewing, you know, specifically about adding themselves, not that they're, obviously, not that they're not going to do that, but it's important that that's in the record from my point of view, that that's what they're tasked with.
It'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
In terms of what you want the committee to do.
Okay, I mean, yes, so reviewing 66, well, the motion is...
The motion really should start with what was on the agenda, which was the establishment of a committee to review a proposal to add the Board of Education to Section 66 of the town charter, and then it goes on to say, in particular, the establishment of a committee to consider a requirement that any change to the mode of selection, composition, rights, powers, privileges, or duties of the Board would require a referendum, so that has, I think that has to be made from a proper order of business, then you can move to amend that to include the areas that you would like them to focus, so that's the, that's the primary motion, and so I will move it, we've been discussing it, we never, we really should have moved it probably from inception, but we kind of gave the overview, so we'll move that, is there a second?
Second.
So then, discussion, now you can...
Okay, and then, okay, so amend, yeah, this is going to require two, all right. It's going to be a disconnect vote for me.
Let's help forget this, correct, so, Ms. Heinz, so essentially, a motion was made and seconded to take up for a formal discussion the agenda item, which was to establish a committee per what was described.
That's supposed to be for the board now.
Correct, that's the only thing that's before the board posted, what Mr. Marsulo is going to do is move to amend that to include 67, simply, that's how I understood it.
So there's two votes then, one to amend it, and then for a, because my vote is going to be, there's going to be, I'm going to move to amend, just with my, with the language I want included, I guess we have to take a vote there, then we're going to vote on the whole, because I'm going to be voting against, there's going to be a yes vote to get something on, I'm going to be voting against the whole thing in principle.
To do what you wish to do, I would suggest a motion to amend the charge to this committee, which I think is what you're suggesting, to include an amendment to Section 67 of the charter, as you have suggested.
Yes.
You have the right to do that, in my humble opinion.
Okay, but then there's going to be a... Okay. But then, then there's gonna be a second vote, correct?
You would then vote on your amendment.
Yeah.
Assume for the sake of this discussion that your amendment gets a second, it may or may not. Assume for this discussion that your amendment is adopted.
Sure.
You will then have before the board the charge to this committee, which would include what you have on your agenda, together with your amendment.
Okay. Okay. Got it?
Okay, so Drew, you've moved to amend the charge before the board.
Yes.
The proposal that's before the board now to charge the committee to include section sixty-seven.
To include section sixty-seven, correct?
Okay, so now we're waiting for a second on that.
Correct. So just, just so if I may ask you, so you've presented something that looks like a charter change itself. And I would just say that I support them looking at sixty-seven. I'm not necessarily supporting the language that you're bringing, because to me, then we're superseding the process.
Okay.
And I don't want to give any appearance that we voted to, on a specific charter change today, because that isn't what we were, we're just simply establishing a committee to look at a question. So I will second your motion-
I will take out, actually, for you, and I hear what you're saying.
I just don't want to-
To commit, I understand that. So I'm okay with, at this point.
Right.
I'm agreeing with Peter in this. I don't have to specifically have this wording in to get them, but they're gonna, they're gonna visit sixty-seven, but we can then, I mean, they'll be, they'll, they'll read the notes, I mean, they're gonna have, you know, I, okay, I'm okay with that.
So what Selectman Marsulo is saying, as I understand, he wants the, the committee to look at sixty-seven. And so therefore, our charge in establishing the committee must include that. The document he provided today, though, gets into actually a, a change itself for which would be superseding what we're-
We can take that.
Were taking up today, which is a slippery slope.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm okay with taking that out.
Okay. So it's been moved in second to discussion? Mr. Toner, you've been so quiet.
What are we voting?
Actually, you used to be a teacher in your early years, so see?
I left it.
Okay.
Became a banker.
And the rest is history. So all those in favor of the amendment to the establishment of the committee to include section sixty-seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Obstain. So to-
What was the vote?
Obstained. Okay, so now, so now the motion is amended, is to establish a committee to review the proposal to add the Board of Education to section sixty-six and sixty-seven of the town charter. Is there a second? You had seconded it before, when it was prior to being amended. It's now amended. Okay, is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Two?
Again, I'm against, so.
Two, one, zero. And then, so finally, so this is similar to the process we followed last time, in my recollection. We voted at one meeting to establish a committee, then at the subsequent meeting, we voted on the people on the committee. So to be consistent, then I, we should follow that. Frankly, we know there are four people from the prior committee who are interested in serving. I don't think there's any secret. Mr. Finger, I spoke to this morning, and the others-
I spoke to him too, and he was willing to serve, yeah.
Very much so. He was so enthusiastic.
Yep.
We need a theft, I'd like to, as I said, find the fifth, meet the profile of a unaffiliated, could be a Democrat, doesn't matter to me, in-
That's taped now, remember.
A woman. But again, I just go back to, our electorate is comprised of-
You're on tape.
Thirty-six point four-four percent unaffiliated, thirteen thousand two eighty-two.
The joke.
Thirteen thousand thirty Republicans, thirty-five point seven-five, and nine thousand five hundred and seventy-six Democrats, twenty-six point two. And then there's other, one and a half percent. So, and yeah, we want to-
Can I just, just ask for, and Laura, Ms. Erickson is here, but can we-
Mrs. Erickson.
Mrs. Erickson, I'm sorry. Can we, though, even though you can bring, I still would like something from our board directed to the chairman of the Board of Education.
Fine, I'll go do that right after, and I'll copy everybody.
If that's okay.
So to be clear, you want them to take up a position on-
A Board of Education issue, yes.
On, on any changes affecting them going to refer, because that's the issue before us.
Formally, sure. I think that would help in our deliberations. I think it's, once again, it's an education issue, so yes.
Easy, easy. Done.
That's it.
Lot of billable hours for a simple question. Love you, Wayne.
You too.
All right, that's it.
That's it. Watch everyone leave now.
I see a couple people out here who could fulfill that requirement. Think about the offer. You want to be on another committee.
These smiling faces.
No one's jumping for joy about it, I could see. By the way, my, my understanding of Robert's rules and training are directly attributable to Mr. Crummick, now Judge Crummick, when I was on the BET. And I've told him that when he was appointed judge, that, yes, he taught me. I learned a very hard lesson, but it was a good lesson. I'm not perfect-
Well, tell us what the lesson is.
No, about Robert's rules. He gave me-
What was the lesson, though? Now you have a-
Like points of order.
All right.
Yeah, anyway. Okay, we're going to new business. The next item is a, is a, relative to the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Grant Program. And we have with us our community development program administrator, Princess Erfe. And the item does require a public hearing, so we'll establish that. And we will keep it open throughout the meeting for those who wish to comment on this. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program allows for tax credits to be earned by business firms that make cash investments of at least two hundred and fifty dollars to certain community programs. The cash investments must be made in a community program that is proposed and conducted by a tax-exempt or municipal agency. It must be approved both by the municipality in which the program is conducted and Department of Revenue Services. One of the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act programs is for the town's governing body to hold a public hearing and vote to approve the programs. Documentation of all public hearing notices and minutes of the meeting approving the programs must be submitted to the Department of Revenue Services no later than July 1, 2016. So Ms. Erfe, we have four applications. The first is from the YWCA's Domestic Abuse Services for one hundred thousand dollars. Kids in Crisis Safe Haven for Kids, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The YMCA of Greenwich Energy Efficient Window Replacement, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the Child Guidance Center of Southern Connecticut Mobile Crisis Intervention Services, sixty thousand dollars.
Just a point, oh, before we start, can we open the-
I did it, eleven twenty-six.
I was partly paying attention.
And I want to recognize, there's members of your committee here.
Yes.
Ms. Bellin, Ms., Mrs. Crummick.
That's it, that's enough.
No, you're on the, are you on the?
No.
You're not?
Oh, okay, I thought so.
I thought you were.
I did too.
Perhaps next year.
Next year, yeah.
Well, this is somehow related to commu, to the Community Development Block Grant Administrator, Grants Administrator responsibility. But just a point of correction, the applications will be due to the Department of Revenue Services on July 1, 2017. And as I say that, on the memo that we provided to you, March 31st was when we notified the agencies of the Neighborhood Assistance Act program application. It was also, they were due back to the Community Development Office, April of twenty, April 28th. After your action today, including the public hearing, we'll be sending the application proposals to the RTM for their June meeting. The deadline for that is tomorrow, by the way, May 12th, to the Town Clerk's office.
Is it, I think it's the 19th.
Oh, 19th?
Yeah.
Well, my, my personal deadline is the 12th, so that would number one on the list.
But it's the 19th.
And so that's, June 12th will be the RTM meeting. Soon after that, or after their minutes are available, we'll send them to the Department of Revenue Services. By August, they will notify us which programs are approved. And then between September and October, the agencies whose programs were approved will have to seek out business firms to complete an application to the Department of Revenue Services for the tax credit program. And that's really it. I have some historical information from, sorry, just to add. So last year, 2016, we had eight programs that were approved from five agencies. The total of the applications was eight hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Of that eight programs that were approved, only one program was, received credits from a business firm. And just going back to 15, there were two programs that were approved, and only one, again, received a tax credit.
Have you, have you seen through your tenure a reduction in the number of participants supporting with the credits? Indeed, if you have, do you think it's a direct correlation to the economic environment?
Well, I just started this, I believe, last year. This is my second year doing this. But going back to, from 2012, we've had a lot of program applications that were approved by the town and were approved by the, the state. I think it's a matter of the agencies really getting business firms to contribute cash contributions to the programs that were approved. There is, from the, the way I understand the program, there is a limited number of funding available for tax credits. So if, let's say, for example, they receive more than what they anticipate to provide for tax credits, they proportionately reduce the tax credits to all the, the business firms. But it's, it's been an ongoing credit program, tax credit program. So I don't think it has anything to do with whatever is going on statewide.
Great, thank you. But does anyone here want to comment, offer comment on it? Well, we'll keep the hearing open throughout, as we address a couple of other items under new business. Some of them, rather, perfunctory, which is the meeting dates under C and D. The next item before us really is an informative one. It doesn't require the board's approval, but it's from our town attorney, and it relates to a request that he has before the Board of Estim and Taxation for additional appropriation. We received a memo dated May 4. It is alluded to in the memo that this need has been brought forth as a result of extended illnesses incurred by lawyers and staff in the department, and then also the unanticipated expenses in conjunction with a new application filed by Eversource before the Siting Council. I'll let you explain it. I was gonna say that the money that was spent, which I'm aware of the amount, certainly was well-spent in terms of the outcome, in terms of protecting the rights and interests of the citizens. And we anticipate that it'll be as costly on the second round for which the town is, is, is provided twenty-five thousand if a new application is submitted from the Siting Council in the state.
I would not proceed to seek additional funds without letting your board know about it, Mr. Chairman. In terms of background, I can tell you I have had occasion to meet with the Law Committee, Beth Crummick serves on that, of the BET. I appeared before the BET on Tuesday evening, Monday evening, I guess it was, at which time the BET Budget Committee unanimously approved additional funds, which would be used primarily in conjunction with the very new Eversource claim, which was just recently filed for reconsideration of the decision that was made a year ago. In speaking with outside counsel on this as recently as the other day, I am informed that that motion will most likely be granted, and that unfortunately, we will probably go through or have to go through the same process that we did previously, which would involve evidentiary hearings, briefing, and oral argument. It could be a lengthy process, and it could be an expensive process. It is my opinion that we need a specialist from outside that does this on a regular basis, is familiar not only with the statutes and the applicable procedures, but with the people on the board that know them and trust them. It is anticipated that that would cost at a minimum one hundred and forty thousand dollars. In addition to that, due to illnesses within the department, which I will not go into in detail, other than to say we were down over a period of time, three lawyers and one staff person. There are some additional expenses I expect I will have between now and the end of the year in order to go even with the budget that has been allocated to us. For clarity's sake, this is for this year's budget. For clarity's sake, I have also spoken briefly with the L and R Committee, which would oversee this, to tell them that it was coming, that there had been, the developments that have occurred within the last several days have upped the ante in terms of what we expect it will be to price. But it is a very serious issue with respect to where one of the proposed locations for this piping would go. So I think it is worthwhile and worth defending. The BET Budget Committee unanimously approved an additional appropriation, not of the one hundred which I have here, but actually of two hundred because of the increase in the anticipated expenses that we would incur. So that is what I am making you folks aware of. I expect to appear before the, before the RTM in June.
Sorry, just to, just to be clear too, though, in terms of the money, but it's, if we don't, can you just, for, for, if we say we didn't defend this, what would, what would happen in terms of pipe was going, can you just explain?
There would be a number of things that would happen. Number one, and I'm having spent some time in the military, I'm a great believer in the concept that there is a reason that officers get to eat last. So if you run out of food, or if you run out of money, the officers do not get paid. That would be the first step that I would take in terms of my own pay. I don't mean that to brag or complain, but take it very seriously. In addition to that, I have already put on notice a number of our outside attorneys indicating that I may have to ask them to slow down the process, if in fact, this is not-
But if Eversource were to get what they were saying, that, can you explain what would happen in the town?
Well, essentially, the town, the town acting on behalf of the interests of its citizens would essentially be handicapped in overseeing the, the application, so-
Which would what? So if they got, if they got what they wanted, then what would happen? Like, the application would, where would the, where would this be going? I like-
Well, there would be no dissenting voices that would have the capability. So really, it's enhancing our capabilities. Certainly, we could, we can write letters. Like, everything that we've done through Amy and through Katie and my office, with, that, that's part of what we do. That's our fiduciary role. But to have someone equipped who deals with these complex applications and knows all the unsundry elements of them in past applications and data, they, we wouldn't have that available to us.
And that they would be able to do, I mean-
And whereas they're coming in with, you know, six guns as a, you know, conglomerate utility who has-
Sure.
-a lot of political influence. And I don't mean to be politic, but I, yeah, the, the Siting Council, as Mr., as Mr. Mailman points out, is a very politically constituted entity. And many of the utilities, you know, follow the money, you know, where they give their money to, to influence decision-making.
And correct me if I'm wrong, our last, through Katie and through you and your leadership, and our, our success last time was quite rare, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that was-
Extremely rare.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was very good, that was a big one.
I think the bottom line, Drew, is that if they-
Yeah.
-got approval to do what they wanted to do, there is the potential for putting in danger the sewage systems we have in place now. That, that's the bottom line.
I'm for this, I'm just asking for clarification, yeah.
Yeah, no, so I think it's, that's one of the driving factors in the requirement for funding. And kudos to the BET for increasing the amount, knowing what's before us. Thank you. Please share that with your colleagues, that we're very thankful.
I know you don't need a vote, but if you have our support, that helps.
I think we can say expression of support for what you're doing, and-
That would be fine.
Thank you. And thank you for giving us the courtesy of, of sharing it with the board, but also the public, to know that in order to defend our interests, we need to engage specialized legal, legals.
And your leadership on this, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that, that's that item. So now, moving to see, we have on May 25th a scheduled meeting. Now, that is the day that Eversource is going to be up in New Britain. So if we can agree to reschedule that either to the day before, or preferably the day before, but it could be the day after.
Could we do it the day after?
I'm the most, I mean, I consider myself flexible, so I'll meet whenever.
Wait, I'm sorry.
He said he would like to do it on a Friday. How does that look to Ms. Heinz? Is that, can we get the room?
I will have to find out about that.
Okay.
Either this room, or we do the phone room?
What's this meeting for?
The Board of Selectmen meeting.
Oh, because we're changing, yeah.
We're changing the date. But also, I know that we expect the Bruce Museum- But also, I know that we expect the Bruce Museum, right, Mr. Branyan, before us?
Oh, yeah.
Is that right?
Yes, we anticipate them having two items of action before the board.
It's going to be a lively discussion.
Are those, is it an MI?
It's, it's not an MI, it's, one will be the traffic ordinance change, and another one will be this board's endorsement of a management agreement.
Okay.
Addendum, addendum number two to the existing agreement.
You're right.
Okay, so those are, so those are substantive issues. Do we know of anything else from departments? I'm just trying to think in terms of not only the date, it's a Friday, but also the venue is important, because you, you always want to have a room that can accommodate people.
Just a point of information, it is a Friday before Memorial Day.
I was just going to say that.
The Wednesday, there's something with the Commission on Aging that I'd like to attend. That's why I'd rather have it Friday.
We can go check our books.
What about the 23rd? Is that a Tuesday?
That would be a Tuesday. I need--
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Can we recess for like five minutes, if I get my book, and then I'll come back?
I'm sure, that's fine. We're going to take a two-minute recess, we're just going to get your calendar.
Yeah, let me just get my calendar, then we'll, wherever you go, if you want to do it, I mean, let me just get it. What do you prefer?
I'll, I'll show up any--
Don gets double timed, by the way, on Fridays.
We are.
Oh, yes, you're, you're on the rescheduling?
Actually, it was because Wayne said frankly he's going to need it, and I think the whole community is concerned about this Eversource tracking, and that's where most of the money is going, I mean, you know, not all, but most of it.
I have a little other question, just to help you relax.
For money?
I guess, those $30,000 checks.
Yeah, I wasn't so sure about that one. Make me a believer, I'll be happy with that. Still a condition on it, but still, I'm open. You better have an extra-large size.
All right, so we're rescheduling the May 25th meeting to 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, May the 23rd?
Correct. Okay. We should just make a formal motion to change this, so it's in a context of approval. So I'll make a motion to reschedule the regular Board of Selectmen meeting noted for May 25th, 2017, at 10:00 a.m., to Tuesday, May 23rd, at 11:00 a.m. Room confirmation to be determined.
Could we also make, also make sure too, if we're sending something to Chairman Peter, that they know if they can maybe opine by the 23rd?
Sure.
Okay, just so we know that.
Okay, so, so that's been moved, is there a second?
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving to June. June is being rescheduled for the following reason, and I'll tell you.
Because our meeting, our original, is on the, the 8th?
The 8th.
Yeah, okay.
So the region's chief elected officials gather monthly for meetings, lunches. I have not a purveyor of lunches. I just, I've gone to a few, I find them to be nice, but, but this time, they've asked Greenwich to host it, which is a rare--
Look at you!
--which is a rarity, because not many people like to come to Greenwich. So I am scrambling--
You need to impress.
I am scrambling to try and find the proper venue. The one time that I did host it, four people came, out of maybe 15. So I want to make--
It's good for the budget.
I think there was a storm going on at that time, that's how far back it goes. So anyway, it's on June 8th, so--
And where are you going?
We're trying to find a place, because there's a very meager budget. They refuse to pay more than $25 for lunch.
Oh, we don't--
I had third--
The town doesn't host it, they have--
No, no, everybody pays their own thing, but I one time did it, and it was 30, and I won't say which town balked and said they refused to pay more than 20. So I, I picked up that cost myself. But anyhow, that's why we're scheduling, because I didn't want to sort of say, well, no, I'm not interested in, you know, it's about Greenwich's reputation, we want to be hospitable too, so--
But we're budget cutting.
Yeah, but I just, I didn't want to say, when they, they said, well, would you be willing to host in June? I didn't want to say, no, I'm not interested. I thought, well, this is an opportunity to get them to come to our town and see--
Is this meeting open? We've got to all come to this.
Sure, I'll let you know the venue.
Okay, okay. So you want to change it from the 8th to when?
I'm, like I said, I'm open, I'm flexible, whenever you gentlemen are available.
John?
Friday.
You like Fridays.
Friday, June 9th?
Okay, let's go.
Is that what you said? Look, open!
I have down here something with the Community Development, interviews round one.
We can move that if you need--
Okay.
Unless you want John and I to--
By the way, did I just spill the beans? I mean, I think I announced that you're, you're, you've, I should have said, you're, you're--
Signed the letter, yes.
Yes, yes, that you're moving to upstate New York, and you're leaving us.
Oh, that's too bad.
So--
That's a loss.
A tremendous loss. I thought we had announced that last meeting, but I'm sorry if I didn't.
Oh, no, no, I purposely signed the letter after.
But you are a tremendous loss. So anyway, obviously, there's a, there's some big shoes to fill.
Oh, Princess.
I'm excited.
It should be hard.
Yes, it should.
Congrats!
Okay, so the 9th is good, would you make a motion to, well, we've got the radio at 9:30, or 9:00, 9:30, so--
Do you want to do it 10:30, 11 o'clock?
Sure, 11 is good.
11 on the 9th?
Yes, so is there a motion to reschedule the regular Board of Selectmen meeting scheduled for Thursday, June 8th, at 10:00 a.m., to Friday, June 9th, at 11:00 a.m. Room to be determined here at Town Hall.
So--
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye. And then just to be clear, the next, then after that, is June, we're still sticking with the, is it the 22nd or the 29th?
Then it should be--
The next meeting technically-- The next meeting technically should be June the 22nd, but I think we're also looking to possibly reschedule that one as well.
I don't see--
Or maybe not.
One Barbara, let's see, I have it done as the 29th.
29th, okay. My errors, my apologies.
So we're good with that one.
God, the summer's almost over. What do you?
So that, that concludes new business, but I, there is one item that I wanted to report, and I literally got the email prior to this meeting, that I meant to, I meant to share with you. And it comes to us from the Commissioner of the Department of Administrative Services, and I was copied on it along with the Chair of the Board of Education, and the Director of Department of Administrative Services, O C, OSCGR, and it's to Mr. Walco, Chairman of the New Lebanon Building Committee. Dear Mr. Walco, as per our discussion, I had indicated I would render an opinion as to the grant application for the New Lebanon School after review of information and discussion with parties on both sides of the issue. I believe I have satisfied all parties in allowing them the opportunity to express their opinion and provide information that they believed was important to substantiate their position. I also pointed out to all parties that the Department of Administrative Services, DAS, through the Office of School Construction Grant in Review, is positioned only to review the applicant's information for the need for a school. We do not determine the reimbursement rate, or in this case, whether or not the school is determined to be a diversity school. I had asked our director to visit the school and report his findings. After reviewing his findings and listening to advocates for and against the project, I am in agreement that the district is in need of a school and support the application for a new, New Lebanon school. Please note, however, I do not take a position on the reimbursement rate, since this is not the purview of this agency. I have made no secret of my position against the diversity designation to all parties, but again, this is not before me. I have instructed the office to assist the district in any way possible to keep costs down while building a safe, secure, healthy environment for our children to learn. Sincerely, Melody A. Curry, Commissioner. So I think that's important to share, it came out today.
That's great.
So it's a step in the right direction, and I, you're welcome here to have this for your file, since you're our delegate to that.
That's awesome, thank you for sharing that.
Okay, next item, appointments, nomination?
We will, we're going to, we'll give people a few more minutes. We're going to go to appointments and nominations, is there any?
There's a whole line of people waiting outside.
I'm watching.
Oh, okay.
We have completed just about all but two or three agencies where we're looking for alternates, so I did, I did, I think, report the last meeting, but I'll report again if, so the, the direct appointments to--
This is not the most current, I don't know where--
The direct appointments to conservation have been made, so conservation is now fully reappointed.
Parks and Rec is out there still.
I think, yeah. And we did move Mr. Rossi on Wetland, so this can be updated. So just Parks and Rec, and I believe, do we still looking for an alternate for PMZ?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's, we're down to two, 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 three, maybe.
Good.
Okay, so, Ms. Erve, we will now close the public comment period for the Community Neighborhood Assistance Act, 11:56, so that left about 40 minutes. We started at 16, didn't we? We're 26, 26. Okay, so now is there a motion to approve the applications as presented by Ms. Erve for Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Grant Program?
I move to--
I second that.
Okay, so they've been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you for your wonderful stewardship over not only the program, but the grants and--
Thank you, Princess.
You're missing me?
We were going to miss you terribly.
Yes, we will.
But we'll, we're going to make sure we give you a nice send-off.
I'm still here, I'm ready to be arguing.
Okay, so we have a couple items in the executive session. One of them is--
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raymer, Mrs. Krumick, thank you. So is there a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation and open worker comp claim?
It's a move.
Okay, is there a second?
There is.
All in favor?
Aye.